One, two, three, four. You have a call, Madam Chair, so you can get started.
Wonderful. March tenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Newburgh is now called to order. Can we, may we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Jason Dale.
Here, sorry, just had to step out.
Connor Hanson.
Present.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Jessica Harrington. Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Aiden Gray.
Here.
That be everybody.
And we have Jeff Musial, who's indicated that he can't get his mic to work.
So. Do there, okay, Jeffrey Musial, present. Sorry about that.
Hopefully he'll be able to join us. Okay. Madam Chair, you can move on to item number three.
All right, I would like to open up the public record for any comments not on this evening's agenda. Is there anybody in the lobby?
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody who wants to comment.
Hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar for March tenth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission Meeting. Consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve Planning Commission Meeting minutes for February tenth, twenty twenty-two?
I motion that you admit them.
Do I have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second Planning Commission Minute Meetings are approved for February tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Chair, point of order. We need to conduct the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Dale.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, or? You know what I mean? Not opposed, but any additional comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, PCMM are approved. Thank you. All right. We are on to our consent calendar. After that is Legislative Public Hearing will be up next. The request is for the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan Accounting Report conforming with Newburgh's comprehensive plan, staff.
So first, Madam Chair, we need to call for any extensions, bias, ex parte contacts, and objections to jurisdiction.
At this time, I would like to call for any extensions, biases, ex parte contact, or objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. Staff report.
Thank you, Robin, if you could pull up the PowerPoint.
Give me a second here. Doesn't want to open for some reason.
If you want to, you can allow, share screen, and I can run it.
Got it, hold on.
It's a very large file.
It is. That's my fault.
All of Elaine's animated stuff in it makes it very large.
I got it now, hold on. Okay, there we go.
All right, thank you very much, Robin. So this evening, we're going to give you a presentation on the urban renewal plan before the commission. Your charge this evening is for a determination if your proposed urban renewal plan conforms with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. You went through this process last spring when we had our initial proposal for the urban renewal plan. So I have with us this evening Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting. She has worked with me for over two years on this project. And we have John Bridges, who is the Chair of our Ad hoc Renewal Advisory Committee. Next slide. So the role of the commission this evening, as I kind of previously mentioned, is to make a determination if the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. We're going to do some tag team here, so Elaine's going to take over and walk through about the next eight slides or so, and then I will jump back in. Then Elaine will jump back in, so you get to hear from both of us, so you don't get to listen to my monotone voice go on all night long. Elaine, it's over to you.
Thank you, good evening. So as we have talked about throughout this whole process, urban renewal is not a new tax. It does not mean new money coming from property taxpayers. It is a division of taxes that property taxpayers already pay. So if you have an urban renewal area or not, your urban renewal portion on your taxes does not mean you are paying more money. Next slide. When we all pay our property taxes, that property tax revenue goes to the county assessor's office, who then distributes it to all of the regular taxing jurisdictions, like the city, the county, the school district. Those taxes go up for two different reasons. In Oregon, we are limited to a three percent increase in our property taxes annually. As long as we have a good economy, the assessor sees fit to assess that three percent increase. And then by substantial improvement, substantial improvements are just either improvements to your property, your existing property, or new construction. Next slide. When an urban renewal area is formed in a city, the taxes within that urban renewal area at the time that it's formed will continue going to all of the different taxing jurisdictions. Any taxes from the time it was established that are increased due to those two reasons, the three percent appreciation or new construction substantial improvements will go to the urban renewal area to conduct programs and projects and pay for administration of that area. As you can see by the graphic, that is for the urban renewal area only. The remainder of the taxes for the rest of the city continue going to all of the different taxing jurisdictions as they always have done. Next slide. This just shows how that increased property tax revenue due to that three percent appreciation and any new construction or rehabilitation for the urban renewal area only, so the area in blue goes to the urban renewal agency. Next slide. The impacts of urban renewal are on the taxing districts. It does not provide new money. It diverts funds that would otherwise go to the different property tax districts. Again, they continue receiving their taxes on what's called the frozen base. That's the assessed value of the properties at the time the area is established. That frozen word makes people sometimes think that they quit paying property taxes, if we can go back one, please. I just didn't talk quickly enough. I think this has a timer thing on it. But it just means that's the value at the time the area is established. The different taxing jurisdictions will forego that growth in the urban renewal area. One main concept of urban renewal is that growth may not have occurred, but for the projects that are allowed to be done through the use of the urban renewal funds. That is very much so in this urban renewal area, because all of that development that we are projecting for the riverfront area would not occur unless infrastructure is put in within that area to allow it to occur. So we talk about the amount of money taxing districts will forego, and part of that includes that estimate of future tax revenues that will happen only because of the projects that happened because of this area. Next slide. School districts and education service districts are treated a little differently. There is an indirect impact to those districts in regular, that's okay, next slide. In regular taxing districts, the urban renewal impact is first on that local property tax revenues. So the impact is directly on the taxing jurisdiction. Next slide. In schools, this represents the school's funding formula. It is very complicated, and as you can see, the bottom square is a state school fund. Property taxes are a portion of that state school fund, but they are a minor portion of the state school fund. Any property taxes that are not going to urban renewal that, excuse me, any property taxes that go to urban renewal instead of to the state school fund are what called backfilled by the legislature when they do their allocations every two years in the legislature. Schools are funded on a per pupil basis. The legislature adopts what that per pupil number is and then finds the resources to make up that number. So what we say is schools are impacted indirectly. They're impacted because those property tax revenues don't go to the state school fund, but other revenues are resourced to be able to meet that per pupil ratio for all of our schools in Oregon. Next slide. This goes back to Doug.
Thank you, Elaine. So last spring, summer, we presented this slide to you, but it has been revised. We have been working since really twenty fifteen, which brought forward documents in twenty sixteen to the city council. We have done a downtown improvement plan. We did an economic development strategy. We updated a transportation system plan. We've gone through a series of updating our infrastructure master plans for transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. We did a community visioning program in twenty nineteen. We've moved forward and we did an economic opportunities analysis. We've done a housing needs analysis. We've done updates to our economic development strategy over the years. We initiated and started the process on the urban renewal program. We did a riverfront master plan. And so that brings us up to twenty twenty-two, which is the new column in that particular chart, where we are updating our tourism strategy and we are continuing the activities on the urban renewal program. So the top right graphic is our riverfront master plan area. It's about four hundred and fifty acres in size. It is a a horizontal mixed use type of project and some vertical mixed use. So the purple area is for industrial. You'll see a brown area just to the east of River Street. That, the base zone, is industrial, but it could allow up to sixty thousand square feet of office space and sixty thousand square feet of retail space. We worked through that process through the master plan and through the transportation planning rule and with DLCV and ODOT. The red areas that you see are for vertical mixed use. It could be retail with housing above. Then you have the variations in the color of yellow, from a light yellow to a darker brown. So the lighter yellow areas are medium density residential areas. The darker browns are high density residential areas. You also see on this map a variety of other improvements. Ninth Street, River Street, College Street, Blaine Street Extension, you see an esplanade, and we'll get into more of the details. One of the primary elements that the community identified when we did the riverfront master plan was parks and open spaces. And so you see a lot of green towards the bottom, just north of the river, but moving up to the black lines, and that's all park and open space area. The center graphic is our downtown improvement plan. You've heard from me before, the ten big ideas. And so those include items such as road diets, more housing along Second Street, gateway features, arts, kind of the civic corridor component of that. And we'll get into more of the details of the urban renewal portion. On your far right is a map from the Oregon Economic Development Association, which the City of Newburgh is a member of, and identifies where urban renewal districts are located around the state of Oregon, and they're both in urban and in rural areas. Next slide. Back one up. So for the urban renewal plan, the city council established an ad hoc citizens advisory committee. They have met eleven times through this process. Three of those meetings were addressing the issues about revisions that we'll get into more. We've done a lot of community engagement and outreach. And you can see on the slide that we've done things for videos. We have a webpage that's there. You can watch the videos, social media, and we've done fact sheets and circulated that out. We've continually advised and briefed the city council and the planning commission, so you have heard this before, for the members who were here at that time. And probably most importantly, as we've gone through this process, is that we've informed the taxing districts. And so as we were going through the feasibility study and then moving into creation of the plan and the report, is we continually pushed information to the taxing districts, either via links to the ad hoc committee packets and/or specific documents that were being addressed at points in time. Excellent. So the urban renewal district itself. In this revised proposal, it's five hundred and forty acres. It's about fifty-four acres less than the original proposal. The maximum indebtedness is a hundred and twenty-five point eight million dollars. It includes the riverfront area and the downtown area with the connections of Blaine Street and River Street. So at the top of this graphic, the blue is the downtown area, little over a hundred acres. As I mentioned before, the riverfront area is about four hundred and fifty acres per the master plan, but it excludes certain properties. The old landfill, Rogers Landing, and some individual parcels who chose not to annex into the City of Newburgh. As Elaine mentioned earlier, urban renewal does not increase your property taxes. Next slide. Now I'm going to go through the various sub areas that the ad hoc committee identified as they were doing their evaluation. They had a hierarchy that they were looking at with industrial land first, then looking at that commercial land, mixed commercial land, which in part relates to the downtown area, then that high density residential component. Then the last category was that lower density residential. So the slide on your left is the mill site, which is now under demolition. That demolition should all be completed in about June of twenty twenty-two. So on this slide, on the right-hand side is Wynewski Street. And when I talk about roadway improvements, I'm also talking about the infrastructure that goes underneath that roadway. Water lines, sewer lines, wastewater lines, or a combination thereof. We have Dog Ridge Road identified in this proposal. And then the bluff road, which is along the top of the bluff down towards the Willamette River, and then a road that's more east-west in orientation that goes through the mill site. The green line you see in this slide is the esplanade, and so that came out of the riverfront master plan and the community identifying those opportunities to have those view corridors and so forth over the Willamette River and French Prairie on the south side of the Willamette. The graphic on your right is Sub Area B, and that is to the west of River Street and south of the bypass. Does not include the landfill and a parcel to the west of the landfill, and then a small parcel that is off of Waterfront Street. But in this one, the green lines that you see are part of the bypass trail, Newburgh Dundee Bypass. The other line that's green is the other element of the esplanade along the top of the bluff, and that goes from River Street over to Waterfront Street. The yellow that you see on this is transportation and other infrastructure improvements. And we also have a rail crossing improvement that needs to be addressed based upon conversations we've had with Oregon Department Rail Division. Next slide. Sub Area C is on the left. The green lines are wastewater lines, where they kind of come to that apex down off of Weatherly Way would be a new wastewater lift station. From there, the bottom green line would be a forced main that would go off to the northeast until it gets to the point where it can gravity flow. The other green lines would be gravity lines and the decommissioning of two existing lift stations. Sub Area D on the right-hand side, starting at the top, would be sidewalk and ADA improvements along Ninth Street, just to the north of that red line, of course, is Edwards Elementary. The yellow lines on this graphic are College Street in the center and improvements for transportation, sewer water, and storm going down and connecting with Fourteenth Street and Waterfront Street. There would be another rail crossing improvement to address the growth and development. And then on the left-hand side would be the the kind of the brown line, which would be an extension of Blaine Street, south of Ninth. It stopped short of College Street because that one property would not be within the urban renewal district, and the city would look at other alternative ways to provide funding to make that roughly last six hundred foot connection down to College Street. Next slide. Sub Area E, you're going to see a theme that will continue, and that's River Street. And we've all driven down River Street, and it's potholes and it's rough. It doesn't have ADA accessibility, narrow sidewalks, and it has inadequate infrastructure underneath the roadway. So this segment basically goes from the bypass and it goes north. The graphic on your right is a continuation of River Street, which brings you up to Third Street. And again, for those transportation and other infrastructure improvements. Next slide. Sub Area G is on the left, and this is on Blaine Street. Most of this area is identified in our comprehensive plan for higher density residential development for infill and/or redevelopment opportunities. And we have insufficient transportation, sewer water, and storm drainage to be able to support that. This is also supported by the infrastructure-based time extension request as part of House Bill two thousand and one, where we did an evaluation of the area south of downtown, where we identified about six and a half million dollars of water infrastructure improvements that are related to fire flows. Then the last sub area that the ad hoc committee looked at was in the downtown area. So within the, the yellow kind of circle lines is that identifies two additional public parking lots, and that comes from businesses in the downtown area in that particular need. The blue lines you see, which predominantly go north-south, but there is one east-west, are waterline improvements. So those vacant lots that we have in the downtown area to try to get that vertical mixed use, ground floor, residential above, and/or multi-story commercial buildings and/or residential along Second Street, we have inadequate sized pipes to be able to support that. And again, that comes back to the issue about having fire flows. The circles that you see in the center is, those are two new proposed traffic signals on Blaine Street and First, Blaine and Hancock. And that's to support development down in the riverfront area, as we have three primary transportation corridors coming into the riverfront area, being Blaine Street, River Street, and Wynewski. The brown that you see in the center, in the east-west, the bottom one is First Street, and that's the road diet. And we've talked before about widening out the sidewalks, creating that pedestrian-friendly environment. And the ad hoc committee in the revision also added in the issue about Hancock Street, and so similar approaches to that. The bottom solid yellow line you see is Second Street, and that is utility undergrounding. So to get that vertical housing opportunity to occur, the power lines are in the way. And so we've had conversations with Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue about their ladder access to get to, you know, three or four-story buildings. And so undergrounding those utility lines. Next slide. So, impact to the City of Newburgh. Elaine, you want to take over from here?
Sure.
I think this is the right slide.
Yes. So the way urban renewal works is that these urban renewal projects will be expected to spur development, which is within the urban renewal area, which will increase Newburgh's tax revenue in the future when the urban renewal area is over. During that thirty-year estimated timeframe of urban renewal, the city is expected to forego a little over forty-three million dollars. And that is because that money will then go to the urban renewal agency to be used for all of those projects that Doug just covered. Again, it does not reduce any existing revenues to the city. It just impacts future revenues on increased growth within the urban renewal area. The important thing to remember about urban renewal is it leverages the city tax rate with the other permanent rate taxes of other taxing jurisdictions to create a larger funding source for project implementation. So although the city loses forty-three, you know, projected forty-three million dollars, and again, part of that wouldn't occur but for urban renewal, the anticipated amount of revenue that will be allocated to this area is over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So that forty-three million dollars leverages that other money that comes in from what might have gone to the other taxing jurisdictions. Next slide. This shows how those revenues are projected to occur on an annual basis. So urban renewal always starts out slowly, and that's because it's based on that three percent growth. So the initial year of the urban renewal area, the amount of money that would come to the area from growth that would have gone to the City of Newburgh is fifty-seven thousand dollars. You can see that increases each year. It increases both because of the three percent growth, but because of the anticipated new development within the area. You can see by fiscal year twenty fifty-three, which is the next to bottom row on the right-hand side, that equals about three point seven million dollars for that year. Next slide. The plan does have a duration provision. Duration provisions are not required by the Oregon statute, but it is something that gives a lot of comfort to the taxing jurisdictions because they are foregoing the tax revenues in the area. So this has a provision that the plan will not exceed a thirty-year time period, and that there will be a review of the plan every five years with a requirement to consult and confer with the different taxing districts. Again, those are voluntary provisions that the city put in to help deal with questions from the taxing districts. Overall, the taxing districts have been very supportive of the plan. When I have talked with them, they understand the need to provide the infrastructure within the area and understand the amount of jobs and new economic activity that can come from these investments. Next slide. When we do the comprehensive plan review, we look at each chapter of the comprehensive plan and identify whether the projects that are being undertaken will conform to that section of the comprehensive plan. The sections that we looked at were citizen involvement, air, water, and land resource quality, area subject to natural hazards, open space, scenic, natural, historic, and recreational resources, the economy, housing, urban design, transportation, public facilities and services, and energy. Next slide. We also reviewed all of your different master plans because they We also reviewed all of your different master plans because they are component parts of your comprehensive plan. So the transportation system plan, the wastewater master plan, the water master plan, the stormwater master plan. And your economic development strategy. Next slide.
So I will come in to close here, always, we have to make sure that we enter the entire staff report into the record. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three seventy-eight. At this point, Miss Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you for any proponents and opponents. Comments.
At this time, I would like to ask proponents to speak or opponents, limited as five minutes. And we'll have questions from commissioners, we'll deliberate and any final comments from staff. At this time, I'd like to have any proponents.
And so I think this is the opportunity for Chair Bridges to make some comments based upon the ad hoc committee.
Ah, yes.
Thank you, um, I appreciate your everybody's patience. You know, several things that I want to point out to you. First off, all the different taxing districts that are affected by the plan. Were invited to participate on our committee. And most of them did. I think only two did not participate and frankly, that was really pretty valuable because in addition to Doug Rucks having a lot of experience with the urban renewal. The Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue has a lot of experience with it, they have urban renewal districts in several of their communities. And they were a great filter for us to understand. Where we really could do good for the whole community and and what we set up as a priority. Is the capacity to make stuff shovel ready. And then, not only do we want to make it shovel ready. But we want to make it shovel ready in a priority segment that Doug mentioned. And the first is industrial property. Second is commercial property, third is mixed use property. Then high density residential and then very last, anything that might affect single family housing. So our focus really has been on. Getting family wage jobs by getting industrial properties ready to go. And and that really has been the priority both when we set up the original project list. And then we had to go through a cutting process, I think four or five times where we cut projects out. To get down. The the very last one, we had to cut two different times because the mill got reevaluated on its tax valuation. And so we cut with the same priorities in mind. Fortunately, as we come back to you now. Because we're one tax year from where we were at with the last plan, we actually were able to add some projects back in. And we use the same priority analysis. As we looked at adding those back in. The plan that you saw before was only going to have a road diet on First Street. Now we were able to back add back in a road diet on Hancock. And so I think we have a really wonderful in that area opportunity to retake our downtown. And make it a pedestrian friendly commercial environment. And, you know, I, we did kind of intentionally start down at the riverfront with our sub areas. Because that's a real economic engine that's going to drive this thing and. Everything is designed so that it it puts all the infrastructure in so a developer could come in and and develop an industrial property. Buy big expensive equipment, put it in there and leverage more tax dollars in the future. So that's, those are the things I wanted to point out to you and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bridges? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Bridges for your explanation testimony.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, then we need to check with Robin if we have any other proponents.
Yep. Robin, do we have any other proponents in the lobby?
I see, I see none. No hands.
Wonderful. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Madam Chair, then we need to go to opponents.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, yes, can we have any opponent speak at this time?
Again, seeing none.
All right, staff, do you have any final comments?
Staff's final comments on this one is that we have determined this. And identified in your staff report this evening that the urban renewal plan conforms with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. And our recommendation is that the commission adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three seven eight.
Do I have any motions?
I motion to. Accept the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three seventy-eight at Newburgh. Urban renewal plan for conformance to the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan.
I second the motion.
We have a first and a second, we will take a roll call vote.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Connor Hanson.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Jeffrey votes yes in the chat.
Aiden Gray.
Yes. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, your motion passes.
Passes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven to zero, adopted resolution number twenty twenty-two, three, seven, eight is adopted. Our next, on to our next. Consent calendar is a quasi judicial public hearing. CUP twenty-two dash zero zero two at five one four College Street. Our applicant Sir Stacy Athan and Cody Willis. The testifying procedure will be limited to five minutes. First proponents, second opponents, and then a chance for rebuttal. And then we'll close public testimony. And the purpose is plan commissioners view. The application here testimony deliberate and make a motion on the matter.
Madam Chair, we need to. For extensions, bias, expertise contacts.
And I would like to call for any extensions, bias, expertise contacts or objections to jurisdictions.
None indicated.
Hearing none. May we have the Luba announcement done by our student Adrian Gary?
Alright, ORS one nine seven point seven six three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner. Or other city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its dizzy need to respond to the issue. Precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on application. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the request.
Thank you, Adrian. At this time.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I need to put into the record one minor modification. Oregon Legislature changed the numbering system in regards to the legal language, so it is actually now ORS one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven.
Who are S?
One ninety-seven point seven nine seven.
Alright, thank you, Doug. Is that it from staff? No comments?
For that portion, yes.
Okay. Are you gonna do, will staff do a presentation at this time?
Yes, we will. Robin, if you could pull up PowerPoint. So the case before you this evening is a vacation rental request at five fourteen North College Street. I will begin by entering the entire staff report into the record, next slide please. So, the background for this one is Stacy Aitman and Cody Willis have submitted an application to the city of Newburgh. This is for a conditional use approval for vacation rental in a three bedroom, single family home. It's again, its location is five fourteen North College Street, we've identified the tax map and tax lot number. That this parcel has, it is in the R two, which is the medium density residential zone. It's also in our airport overlay conical surface. The applicable criteria for this case is fifteen point two two five oh six oh. Which is the conditional use criteria through a type three process. As well as fifteen point four four five three hundred through three fifty, which is our vacation rental home standards. Next slide. So this is a map identifying the location of the subject property, it's at the intersection of East North Street and North College Street. So it's identified in the area bounded in red. Next slide. So this is a recent picture as of a few days ago of the particular home. Next slide. So the criteria fifteen two two five oh six oh. So the first is dealing with location, size, design and operating characteristics in summary. So again, this is located in an area that is existing single family homes. It's about four blocks. North of downtown, as the slide says. From the site, it's six, four blocks to the south and it's two blocks to George Fox University to the east. The use is similar to a residential use. In its design and its operating characteristics. And there are two off-street parking spaces and those parking spaces take their access to East North Street. Next slide. So subsection B for this one again is dealing with location design and site planning and then C's. Will it be consistent with the code? So staff summary, further detailed in your staff report. The location is attractive for a vacation rental, given its proximity to downtown, regional attractions. And to George Fox University. As I noted before, there are two existing off-street parking spaces with their access off of East North Street. And generally that the use is compatible with other residential uses that are located within the area. Which are both owned and rented. Next slide. Vacation rental standards themselves. So it has to be in a single family dwelling, which it is at five fourteen North College Street. They would need to register with the city for transient lodging tax, that means for the rental of the units is that there is a nine percent tax. For the use of it as a. Vacation rental that's paid by, based upon, you know, what gets charged on a nightly basis. We have to have two off-street parking spaces and I've mentioned twice is that there are two. It's a three bedroom home, so the maximum occupancy for a vacation rental is six. They cannot have or include as part of the vacation rental, the use of RVs, tents or any temporary shelters. There is a requirement that the applicant would have to post near the front door. The contact information for the police department, what the vacation rental standards are, what that maximum occupancy is. What day the garbage pickup will occur, which is on Wednesday. And next slide. In your packet this evening, there are, there's an original letter from Mr. Bueller. Expressing his concerns about a vacation rental at this location. There was a supplemental packet that went out on Monday. From Dr. Baker. Who lives in the area as well, expressing his concerns about the changing character of the neighborhood area. And a prior vacation rental that was approved on Franklin Street. And then there was a previous review by the planning commission of another vacation rental in this particular area. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt order number twenty twenty-two dash oh three. And that will conclude staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any proponents in the lobby?
I see none, Madam Chair.
Oh, so we have Stacy and Cody are there. And those are the applicants.
That's right, I'm sorry. I'm promoting them.
Hello, everyone, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, thank you for your time, everyone. And thank you again for helping to the process, answer our question. Um. Again, my name is Cody Willis, my wife Stacy here, we live locally here in. We've been living in Oregon for about three years. In a job opportunity up here. Industry. Where I work back home in California. For a long time now, this opportunity for. Investment has been a goal of ours and we finally put ourselves in. Achieve that goal, so we're excited at the opportunity for this, we're very fortunate. And again, great time for for hearing. The house obviously will be used as an investment property for. Through my work, I have a lot of colleagues that work in California that travel up here frequently. To train. The wine industry that we service locally here in the Willamette Valley. So we'll be utilized a lot for for business needs. Both family, additional lodging when we have family visiting as well. We do have family frequently visiting here once, twice, every couple of months from California. As you Doug mentioned earlier. Additionally to that. Preserving the home and the area and community. We will have sound monitoring devices. Regulate noise. In our guests. Policies with use of the home. Occupancy for guests. Just a few additional features we'll have to to regulate and keep. The preservation of the the home and the community. Quiet for the most part. We do respect and we understand the importance of maintaining serving the community there. So, you know, being local, we're we're going to be managing and procuring this home a hundred percent of the time. We've already gotten a chance to meet a few of the neighbors. So we're we're happy to extend our information out to everyone within that area for any questions, concerns. Because we want to pay immediate attention in respects to them. Other than that, we're we're happy to be a part. Other than that, we're, we're happy to be a part of that community. Really help grow, you know, local businesses and create new opportunities for local restaurants and wineries and other small businesses as well. So thank you. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you, Cody. Are there any other questions from commissioners for Cody? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your testimony. I appreciate it.
So Madam Chair, now's the opportunity for any other proponents.
Are there any other proponents available in the lobby?
I don't see any hands.
Hearing none. Well, now here from the opponents. And is Gary Bueller available?
We do not see him as an attendee and we do not see Dr. Baker as an attendee.
Do as well. All right. There any other opponents in the lobby at all other than the letters written?
No indication.
Hearing done. Are there any comments from staff?
Staff's final comments are that the planning commission adopt order number twenty twenty-two dash oh three.
At this time, I would like to ask for any approvals.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think this is a purely valid application. I see no reason to deny it. And I would recommend adoption.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Dale. Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that. I agree. I agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Capri. We have a first and a second. Can we take a vote on a roll call, please? For approval of planning commission order zero two two dash zero three with exhibits A and B with all attachments one through three.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Connor Hanson.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Jeffrey votes yes through chat.
Aiden Gray.
Yes.
And that passed.
All right. Quasi judicial hearing for C U P twenty-two dash zero zero two passes seven to zero. Congratulations. And the next we'll be doing a conditional, a quasi judicial public hearing for a conditional for appeal of the M I S C two two one dash zero 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 one modification of street right-of-way and improvement width on North Elliott Road Improvement Project. And staff, do you have any?
So Madam Chair, we need to call for extensions by ex parte context and accept objections to jurisdiction.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for any extensions, biases, ex parte, or objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. We'll have staff presentation, please.
Uh, first, we need to have Aiden read the legal language.
Sorry. You're right. We are having a, that kind of hearing. Right, Aiden, Miss Aiden Gray or Student Commissioner, can you read our L U B A announcement?
Yes. O R S one nine seven point seven nine seven. Wrote, sorry, requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval and application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in the appeal of this case to the land use board of appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the L U B A. Failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its housing need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing of an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Aiden. At this time, I would like to remind opponents and proponents, testimony must be limited to the planning commission criteria for this appeal of M I S T two two one dash zero zero one at this time. And first, we will have the procedure will be first proponents, second opponents, then a chance for rebuttal.
So Madam Chair, first staff will give a report.
Yeah, thank you.
Robin, if you could pull up PowerPoint. So I will begin by entering the entire staff report into the record. So this is an appeal, A P L twenty-two dash zero 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 one of a miscellaneous decision, which is M I S C two two one dash zero 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 two. As the chair had noted, this is a modification of street right-of-way and improvement with for North Elliott Road from East Portland Road north to Newburgh High School. Next slide. So some background on this. So the city is working on a transportation improvement project to North Elliott Road again from Portland Road, otherwise known as Highway ninety-nine north to the entrance into Newburgh High School. That entrance is towards the student parking side of their parking fields. This project was initiated in May of twenty nineteen through the design process, preliminary design process for this particular case. Four properties were identified where there was, and I use the word desire to narrow the right-of-way with cross-section to less than what is required in Newburgh's development code. And so in the code, it's in fifteen point five oh five point oh three oh G. Next slide. So back one, there you go. So the Public Works Department through its engineering division submitted the application requesting a determination if the right-of-way width could be reduced below the requirements that are identified in the Newburgh Municipal Code, again, fifteen point five oh five point oh three oh G. The proposed improvements along North Elliott Road include pavement, curb and gutter sidewalks, ADA ramps, bicycle lanes, storm drainage improvements, wastewater pipeline improvements, water main improvements, street lighting, and conversion of overhead utility lines to underground lines and traffic calming measures along this particular roadway. There's also landscape enhancement features. So the application was submitted. The director issued a decision on January fourteenth of twenty twenty-two. And that decision was that yes, in those four situations is that the design of the roadway could be reduced below the requirement in N M C fifteen five oh five point oh three oh G. And that information is contained in your staff report. Next slide, please. So here's kind of the North Elliott Road corridor. So the area that's within red again, going from Portland Road up to the entrance into Newburgh High School for the student parking area. Next slide. So the criteria in this particular case. Uh, so under subsection H of fifteen point five oh five oh three, there is a modification. Keyword modification of the street right-of-way and improvement width. And the director pursuant to a type two review procedure process under fifteen point two two oh of the Newburgh Municipal Code may allow modification to the public street standards of subsection G, which I've mentioned several times. When the criteria in both subsections H one and H two are met and there are or in each one of these. So under number one, the modification is necessary to provide flexibility in instances where one unusual topographic conditions require reduced width or grade separation of improved services or next slide. Lot shape or configuration precludes accessing a proposed development with a street which meets the full standards section. Or C, a modification is necessary to preserve trees or other natural features determined by the city to be significant to the aesthetic character of the area. Or D, a planned unit development is proposed and the modification of street standards is necessary to provide a greater privacy or aesthetic quality to the developer. Next slide. Subsection two of that section is that the modification of the standards of the section shall only be approved if the director finds that the specific design proposed provides adequate vehicular access based on anticipated traffic volumes. So again, this is a type two review procedure under chapter fifteen point two two oh. Next slide. So an appeal was filed on the director's determination. The appellant is Mr. Dan DeHaunt and Mr. Jane, who's the managing member of Cedar Terrace LLC, based upon the material that was submitted by Mr. Tyler Smith. Mr. Smith is with us this evening. And so N M C fifteen point one hundred oh nine oh requires proof that the property owner. This is based upon what was submitted by Mr. Smith. Property affected is in the exclusive ownership of the app. The applicant has the consent of all owners. Under fifteen one hundred oh nine oh, the appeal indicates that the city has not provided proof that it owns Mr. DeHaunt's property at eight oh seven North Elliott and that the city does not have the consent of Mr. DeHaunt. Therefore, the application does not contain proof that satisfies N M C fifteen one hundred oh nine oh B. And goes on to further state that this is a violation of N M C and the case law in Johnston versus City of Albany. And that case has been included in your packet this evening. Next slide. Further details on the first element of the appeal in fifteen one hundred oh nine oh bars the application being approved. Mr. Smith goes on and identifies that you have to have proof that the property owner affected by the application is the exclusive owner of the property. Next slide. And under subsection two of the appeal is that the criteria for the modification under fifteen point five oh five oh three oh H has not been met and lists out under A, B, C, and D. Next slide. So before I get to the recommendation, so in your staff report, the city is the road authority, has the ability to design projects. And we are in the design phase of this particular project. And so the engineering division had submitted the application requesting the determination if the roadway width could be modified in four particular locations. The director had issued the decision that it could because it had met the requirements of the criteria that were previously listed. Uh, under the particular appeal, staff also included in the report that under the appellant's premise in this particular situation is that you could never design a roadway or transportation improvement project in that preliminary stage to determine, identify what the potential impacts may be and how those impacts could be minimized or modified for that transportation corridor, particular improvement. The issue in this case, and I brought this up earlier on, is a modification. Mr. Smith has raised the question if it's a variance or not. Late today, at the, towards the end of the day, we did receive an email communication from Mr. Smith. And then I will read this into the record. Mr. Rux, City of Newburgh. I do not expect to be on the, at the meeting tonight, but I wanted to address the claim that this variance application is not a type two application. And M C fifteen point two fifteen oh four oh is shown below and specifically says that variances follow type two procedures to process various requests. As shown previously, type two applications require the signature or consent of the owner. Without that, the application must be denied. And then Mr. Smith included the end fifteen point two one five point oh four oh type two various criteria. As noted in your staff report, this is not a variance. This is a modification process per the language that is in fifteen point five oh five, addressing the issue about right-of-way width. Uh, all of the details from the initial decision of the director plus responses that were provided based upon the appeal are within your packet this evening. So staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt order number twenty, twenty twenty-two dash oh four, which approves the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two Community Development Director Decision. That ends staff's report.
Thank you, Doug. At this time, are there any proponents speaking on behalf of this application? Hearing none, are there any?
See none.
May we hear from any opponents at this time? Are there any in the lobby?
So that would be Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Chair Wright. Director Rux, are you ready? Can you hear me okay and ready?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight. And yes, on this appeal, now Mr. DeHaunt is my only client here. Represent Mr. Daniel DeHaunt. Now, ask the planning commissioners if you could to just quickly look at page three twenty-nine in your packet. If you have it on the computer, it may take a little while to get there, but I point that out because page three twenty-nine shows the dimensions of Mr. DeHaunt's property. And you will notice that annotated on Mr. DeHaunt's property are both a right-of-way dedication and a utility easement that are being proposed. I mentioned this because I think it's important for the planning commission to understand what is going on in the background here. This is property that Mr. DeHaunt owns and the city is proposing and has given notifications to can potentially condemn this property to take it for this expansion of Elliott Road. Now, the expansion here, we, while we certainly appreciate a potential reduction in how much property is being taken. Nonetheless, the property is still owned by Mr. DeHaunt and some of this would still be taken regardless of whether the reduction or the modification as Mr. Rex had stated it is granted or not. So we're talking about Mr. DeHaunt's property. Our, our contention is that this property needs to be acquired first before a land use application can be applied for. And we make that assertion because of the Newburgh Municipal Code. Fifteen dot one hundred dot zero nine zero is for development permit applications. Now, your code defines development. Now, your code defines development permits as any land use or construction permit, which is required by this code. So what it and then it reads on applications for development permits shall be submitted on forms established by the director. An application shall consist of all materials required by this code, including the following information. Subsection B to that is proof that the property affected by the application is in the exclusive ownership of the applicant. Or that the applicant has consent of all the owners of the affected property. Now, he applicant is also defined applicant in your code is defined as the owner or the authorized agent acting on behalf of the owner. The city is neither the owner nor is the city the authorized agent acting on behalf of the owner. So that's why we assert that this has to be either acquired first and taken from Mr. DeHaunt against his will through the condemnation process or purchased through the negotiation process, which has been done with the other property owners that objected to the LA road improvements and expansion, or this the city can't file for this particular land use application. Next, I would ask you to point you out pointed out that it's just simply a fundamental aspect of land use law, which is why we provided the case that Mr. Rex provided that the owner, the property owner must consent to a land use application, or else the government taking their land and using it for a public purpose requires compensation. It's called the taking. It's a consequence. It's a violation of the Constitution. And that's probably precisely why your code has the language in it that requires the owner to have their consent. So I would next then ask you, if you could to turn to page two forty of your packet. Now, what you'll notice when you get to two forty and you heard Mr. Rex mentioned it before that this is that the contention is now that this is a modification and not a variance. But the staff report says things a little different than that. On page two forty. In the second, the the last few sentences of the staff response in the middle there starts at this time. It says, at this time, there is no land use action directly impacting Mr. DeHaunt's property. Well, if there's no land use action taking place, then why is there an application that's been filed? Why is the city planning commission meeting? I would posit to you that there is certainly inland use action taking place tonight. That's why you'll have to vote. That's why the the director made a decision that was appealed. There's definitely a land use action here. And I'll point out to you what kind of a land use action it is. If you can turn to your packet, page three twenty-eight. I apologize for those of you scrolling through a computer screen on a PDF. It's kind of slow. But page three twenty-eight was the original staff request issued on October twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one. And that staff request specifically explains the top starts with given the following and gives a number of recitations of fact. And then the next subsection is the reasons for the request for the variance. So we know at the initial staff was requesting this to be a variance. And now we know later on, after we challenged that assumption, because the city. Yes, thank you. Whoever's putting that up there, I appreciate that. The second I guess caption there in bold is the one that says reasons for the request for variance. And then it gives the reasons for the request for the variance. Now, we understand this has changed since then, and there's no longer any verbiage saying that this is a variance in the later materials. But that does not change the fact that the time that we objected to this and the time we appealed, the original application was a request for a variance. So what we're what we're asking is for the city to hold off on land use applications until it owns this property. The contention that the city would never be able to be in charge of its roads or its right-of-ways is incorrect. Because some parts of this, yes, the city currently has a right-of-way over part of Mr. DeHaunt's property and has utility right-of-ways over part of Mr. DeHaunt's property. The proposal that's out there right now was to take approximately eight more feet of Mr. DeHaunt's property, which the city does not own. So we posit that until and unless the city does acquire that property, either through purchase or condemnation, the city can't apply for land use applications, as it is certainly done here, that cover Mr. DeHaunt's property. I thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from commissioners? Hearing none, are there any staff final comments?
The application that was submitted by the applicant was for a modification based upon fifteen five oh five point oh three oh subsection H. Staff does not control what the applicant uses in its words, but if you go and look at the application page, it's identified that this is an other situation. The applicant never applied for a variance, never filled out and checked the box for a particular variance. Staff has in its report its analysis of why we believe that the planning commission should uphold the planning director's decision. So again, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt order twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four.
All right. Thank you, Doug, for your comments from staff. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Any comments deliberation?
I I have one Commissioner Capri here. I I feel very strongly that the commission or the planning commission should just hold off until this is resolved with the owner of the property. I don't feel like we can go in and just steal his property without his okay. So I feel really strongly about that. I think that until the owner has given his consent to this land use application that the the land is bought and paid for the eight feet that's his. I don't feel like that we should go forward with this.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Capri. Any other comments at this time from any other commissioners?
Madam Chair, a question for Doug. Doug, how close are we to the one hundred and twenty day limit?
Oh, that's a good question. And we're getting close.
Okay, so my question, so if we were to hypothetically continue this until next month's meeting, giving opportunity to resolve this between Mr. Smith there is in his client and city, would that be possible? Without running a foul of one hundred and twenty days, we should say.
It would require the applicant to waive the one hundred and twenty days and add additional time in order to resolve it. I would also, and this will allow Mr. Smith to provide some additional comments, because I'm going to make a comment. I'm sure he's going to have a response to. If you follow the what the code says now, then we would have the city would have to acquire the full amount of the right-of-way per what the code states, which is more than what the preliminary design has identified and the purpose for the application by the applicant to determine if that right-of-way width could be modified and reduced. So there are under that particular premise, it is that the city would have to acquire more land than what is identified in its preliminary design that what they believe they need in order to construct this particular project. So that goes to Commissioners Capri. And it's not taking. There's I noted in the case file is that there have been ongoing discussions with Mr. DeHaunt, represented by Mr. Smith. And there is actually and I will do this visually. Here's the file. Wow, the city has been working on in the discussions, which have been numerous with Mr. DeHaunt and Mr. Smith on the potential acquisition of right-of-way, but but trying to determine and figure out how much right-of-way may need to be acquired for this particular transportation corridor improvement. So I think with that, then I need to stop because we need to allow Mr. Smith to provide any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. I was just I was just trying to be helpful here. The question on the one hundred and twenty days. That would be quite unusual indeed for the city to sue itself for a writ of mandamus. So I don't think that's going to be a real problem.
That would be a first in my career.
Well, um. Okay, so let's let's look at the options here. So assuming we were to continue until next month, giving you or giving the two interested parties an opportunity to go over this a little bit further. That's going to negatively impact the size of the right-of-way. Is that correct, Doug?
It is the the right-of-way width from center line. And so in the applicant's proposal, based upon their justification, was to reduce that right-of-way width. And in the staff report, it was identified it was the natural feature component. Mr. Jahan does have two unique palm trees in his front yard. We don't have many palm trees in Newburgh, Oregon, and reducing the right-of-way width would assist in protecting that natural feature or vegetative feature that exists on his particular property.
Is that? Okay, I mean, legal legal stuff all aside, is that really the sticking point here? Ah, the palm trees, I mean.
That was one of the issues that was raised by the applicant is to protect and preserve those palm trees.
Are they able to be moved?
Yeah.
That I cannot answer. They're relatively large trees. Yeah, I do not know. I don't have any arborist information if it's feasible to move those trees or not.
How do you not have that hat yet, Doug? Come on, just slacking.
Yeah, well, you know, it's those long weeks and short nights.
Yeah. Okay, um. What about something a little bit different, something along the lines of a good faith from the city to Mr. Smith that, you know, some sort of compensation can be worked out without having to extend the meeting?
Well, that is an issue that the city has engaged a right-of-way agent who has worked with various property owners up and down the Elliott Road corridor. And as I mentioned before, there is a case file on those discussions that have occurred with Mr. DeHaunt, represented by Mr. Smith on potential acquisition acquisition of right-of-way for the transportation improvement.
So basically, this decision is up to us tonight.
What you have before you is a staff report with information from the applicant director's decision and another staff report from the director with a recommendation to the planning commission.
Excuse me, can I ask one more question? Am I hearing you say that the idea of pushing off, pushing it off until next month's meeting is not going to work?
No, what I'm saying is is that staff would have to reach back out to the applicant to see if they'd be willing to, in writing, provide an extension of time behind the beyond the one hundred and twenty days that is required by statute to go through all of the local review processes on an application. So again, so this is one where the planning commission, if whatever order it is you choose to do, is that that decision is appealable to the city council, which takes an additional amount of time. There are actually some provisions within the code that says that an appeal needs to be brought forward to the next body within forty-five days. And so in this situation, the appeal was filed two days prior to the end of the appeal period. So we are at the forty-five days in order to to get this issue before you this evening.
Thank you, Doug. Planning Commissioner Wright. I too would agree that palm trees unusually in this area are environmental indicators of change in climate, and it is important of their existence. And I too wonder if it would be appropriate to move them. And that is just a comment about that. And now I'm going to suggest a motion to floor Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-two dash zero four, which approves the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two Community Development Director Decision to April twenty twenty-two meeting. All in favor, or do we have a roll call?
We don't. We we need a second to that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Before before we vote, I'd just like to say one comment, if possible.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Smith brings up a very good point about taking. And if it's between taking and delaying and costing the city a little bit of money and and time to decide, I come down on the side of not taking property even by mistake or some dispute in this. And I'd rather take the time and get it right than go through that. I'm very against any any sort of even the the appearance of that. So I I I I agree with this continuance to next month to work this out.
Yes, I agree.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioners, for your input in this manner. May I have a roll call, please? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Connor Hanson.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Jeffrey Musall votes no through chat.
Aiden Gray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did we get a vote for Mr. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Or a bond?
That was it. Yes, we got both and both voted yes.
Okay. Decision is six guesses and one no. So we will floor Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-two dash zero four to April twenty twenty-two meeting.
That'll be April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven seven PM.
At seven PM. With your bells on. All right, wonderful. Thank you very much, applicants and your Mr. Smith. I really appreciate your time in this matter and bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
All right, at this time. Are there any new business at this time? Can we close? At this time, we'll close public testimony on this.
You already have, Madam Chair, by continuing the hearing to April fourteenth. The hearing is still open. It's just you've continued it to April fourteenth.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Ben, we have any items for workshop?
None.
Any other items from staff?
Yes. So we have your forward calendar. So looking into the future, the crystal ball, so to speak. So on April fourteenth, you've got a quasi judicial hearing for a vacation rental. You have the continuance of the hearing that you just continued to April fourteenth. We are working on middle housing land division regulations. And so I've tentatively penciled in the hearing on May twelfth. Hopefully, we make it. We'll see. We have a development code amendment that we're working on, which is a legislative hearing. We have a development code amendment that we're working on, which is a legislative hearing for temporary importable signs. It's your June meeting. We're going to give you a briefing on the housing production strategy. We've given you a couple of those already. Tentatively, we're looking at the issues of the EOA, HNA, and the public semi-public. In incorporating those into the comprehensive plan. So if I have time. I'm hoping I can get that all put together. It's your June. You have an extra meeting. Please note this on your calendars. You have an extra meeting on June twenty first, which will be a joint session, the night of a city council meeting. On our Portland State University students on the car camping evaluation that's underway. So this is part of our housing work program. And we've engaged PSU graduate students in the planning school. And Mary Heberlin Crichton is managing that particular project. And then we got stuff out in August, looking forward to. Hopefully, the West End Mill District bringing some stuff forward to you. And that's the only thing on that particular night. So and then we've got stuff out in October because I love to plan a year in advance. We've got some stuff on substantial completion, new state law, and we need to integrate that within our development code regulations. We've got hanging piece on institutional zone and some changes. We've got more briefings on the housing production strategy. So I've actually got you calendared out with items all the way out to March ninth of twenty twenty three.
Yay.
A year from now.
Is there still going to be an economic opportunity training tomorrow on March eleventh?
March eleventh. I don't have anything on my calendar for that.
And then I also had March fifteenth, a joint meeting on Monday.
So March eleventh, there's nothing on the calendar. And what was the other date, Madam Chair?
March fifteenth, a joint meeting on Monday.
March fifteenth is on a Tuesday, and there is nothing for planning commission.
Okay. So I missed completely right there on. All right. Thank you very much, Doug. Any other items from commissioners at this time? Hearing none. Planning Commission meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty is now adjourned.
Yay, bye.